You beat me.
Better reaction time.
Fantastic.
Let's be more serious. Good evening. I call the meeting to order, the planning board meeting for tonight. This is our first time being back here and it feels really nice to be able to look out and see actual people. It's kind of great. Right. And it's a little different. When we're on Zoom, you could see everybody's name, but just in case you don't know, John Drooly, Bob Leary, Jim Fox, Pam.
That's Pat.
Back her foot.
I've been Pat for years.
It's been a long time, Charlotte. Paul Dryer, I haven't had to say it, Paul Dryer and Pamela Harding Barrett and Charlotte Harris. So, and tonight's agenda is not that crowded. We have time for things, but we are going to have some interesting discussions at the end if you want to stay beyond your own particular interests. The first thing on the agenda is public comment. This is a time for you to speak if you have something you want to say about a matter for the planning board that's not on the agenda. Is there anyone who would like to do that?
John.
No. Okay. Now, the minutes. We have minutes from May 11th and June 8th. Paul?
In accordance with the governor's order.
Oh, no, we don't have to do it anymore.
I think I memorized it. I recommend approval of the minutes of June 8th and June 11th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes approved. The next order of business is a request for release. Allenby Lots 1A and 2A on Oyster Pond Road, a covenant release. Tom, do you want to say something about that?
I have that against to look into, but I understand it's one of these things that has been ancient and has sometimes reappears in puses of all of my, the attorney of the attorney is here, although it says Kevin Clower is gone. So, in spite of my best effort to look at it prior to the meeting, I have not. So, if we want to take it maybe out of order, I may have a chance to peruse it.
I think we can hear from Bob.
Thank you. For the record, I'm Bob Amant, Falmouth Attorney. My partner, Kevin Clower, assured me I wouldn't have to say anything tonight, but I didn't believe him. And so I actually have tried to understand what this was all about. And actually, a little earlier today, went over to Oyster Pond Road and I looked at the road. So, this was a situation that in 1988, there were four small lots, one of which already had a house on it on Oyster Pond Road across the street from where Fells Road goes off of Oyster Pond Road. And pursuant to the zoning bylaw in effect then and in effect now, a special permit was granted by the planning board allowing the redivision of those four lots into two, each of which had at least 75% of the then required area. So, they actually only were creating one lot. And a subdivision plan was filed to show those two lots, although the frontage was entirely on, for two lots, each had more than 100 feet of frontage on Oyster Pond Road. So, there actually was no road built at all. It was a pork chop lot behind the house, the lot that had the house on it. But there was a covenant filed and the covenant conditions included that there be a shared driveway. The topography pretty much requires it. And the driveway is there. It's actually a very wide, well paved driveway to serve the two houses. And that was the only condition, except a finding that the encroachment of a gravel area on land owned by the Oceanographic Institution isn't construed as an endorsement by the planning board thereof. And it looked to me like 33 years later, that gravel is still there. So, I think that it'd be entirely appropriate after all this time to release the covenant. Somehow, the lot subject to the covenant has been conveyed a number of times without anybody being concerned about it, but I guess Attorney Clower was, or somebody was wisely concerned about it. So, I'd ask you to vote the release. I have copies of everything relevant here, the covenant and the plan.
I think we have. We were given that. Yeah. I think we've got that material right here. Anyone on the board with questions? Bob?
No.
Jim?
Just a comment. In future meetings, could we possibly have this available so everyone at home could see what we're talking about too? They don't know what we're talking about. I don't think it's right.
I would venture to say that it's likely on the screen. It is likely on the podium, I should say. But I don't know that the plan is readily available.
Okay.
Do you want to wait and see it?
No, I think I'm all set. I've seen it on our paper. I'm just wondering. I don't want to get away from not looking at things so people at home in their audience can see it. I just don't like operating in the dark here.
Well, it wasn't our plan to operate without plans, but here we have this instance. Is there anyone else with a comment or question?
May I make a motion?
Yes, you may.
I move that we accept the request for a covenant release on this property.
Second. And Pam seconds it. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor of releasing the covenant?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have an approval not required. The applicant is David H. Martin on a plan of land to exchange equal land area located at 10 Buzzards Bay Avenue and 26 Quissette Avenue. Do we have?
Please.
Anything for the screen? I think it's too small for people to see the locus up in the upper right-hand corner to locate this in town.
So, if you give us just a second, we'll bring it up on the GIS so everyone will know exactly where it is. We're in action already.
Yeah. Oh, that's good. Right there. That's pretty good.
That's okay. Right when we're getting good at Zoom, we're having to relearn all of this.
Back to the old skills.
Right. Oh, it was there for a minute.
Yep. We're getting back there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do we have a street address on the agenda for this? Because I don't see it on the plan.
Yet.
10 Buzzards Bay.
Buzzards Bay, yeah.
Thank you.
And 26 Quissette Ave.
Well, let's try other addresses.
Just double-click on the intersection of the two streets. You should be fine.
What's the second address, please?
Quissette Ave and Buzzards Bay.
Is there a street address on Buzzards Bay?
10 Buzzards Bay and 26 Quissette.
26 Quissette. That's really something that it doesn't come up when it shows up in the screen there, is it?
You're almost on the intersection. See where it is? Right. Almost there. Here we go. Double-click there. You should be fine. There we go.
It's over by the water.
There we are. So, the first question is, who was that masked man? And thank you very much, David. So, the subject property here at the corner of Quissette Avenue and Buzzards Bay. If you want to zoom out for perspective, we're right there by the pond. The A&R itself takes parcel 3B and conveys it to parcel 1, conveys parcel 1A to parcel 3A. Both are not buildable lots. These are intended to increase the size of those two lots. There is frontage on a way, but considering the fact that they are non-buildable lots as they exist, they are perfectly appropriate for the planning board's endorsement. So, 3B goes to 1, 1A goes to 3.
Planning Board members, do you have any question?
No.
Anybody have a question or comment? Motion to endorse?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, would you?
Uh, move to endorse approval not required for a plan of land located at 10 Buzzards Bay Ave and 26 Quissette Ave without regard to buildability.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Tom. We didn't mean to pressure you that hard.
That's okay. The pressure came when they shut the Internet down at 4:30 today to do some research or do some reboots while we were preparing for the meeting. So...
In that case, it's behind us.
It's always interesting doing business these days.
And now, we're going to open a public hearing. The applicant is McSweeney Companies Incorporated.
If, if I may, Madam Chair, Falmouth Boat Storage LLC.
Oh, it's missing on her agenda.
Really?
Oh, no, no, Tom. That was the early one that got sent. Sorry. On the later agenda, Falmouth Boat Storage LLC requests a vote to accept a request to withdraw our site plan review application.
If I may. So, some time back, Falmouth Boat Storage came to us with a request to create a boat storage facility in the LIA zoning district. It wasn't an appropriate use and as conferred with the building commissioner, not permitted use in the district. They asked if they could go to the ZBA, so we continued the site plan review. They went to the ZBA and essentially told the same thing. So, at this point, they have asked us to accept the withdrawal of their site plan application, which essentially closes the books on our side of things. And they will shortly be reapplying at that same site for an actual boat building, but I don't want to steal their thunder. They'll be back probably in a couple of months or so with that. So, at this point, we have an open site plan application for boat storage at 550 East Falmouth Highway. The applicant has requested to withdraw their application and as a formality, we vote to accept their withdrawal. It closes the books. There's no time clock ticking on any site plans or anything of that matter.
As to formality, any comment or question?
No, I won't comment.
Paul?
The withdrawal is without prejudice. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Can you just give me an intersection? I don't know near where this is, the closest intersection.
550 East Falmouth is what I got for you.
Rainy's Corner.
Rainy's Corner. Is that, I just need the closest intersection. I know East Falmouth, but I don't, I haven't memorized the numbers.
I haven't memorized the intersections. We're in pass.
We're gonna have to wait for the site plan application.
I guess so. I just, that's fine. I don't need to know. I thought it'd be convenient to know, but I won't. I can live without it.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I move that the planning board accept the site plan application withdrawal on request of the applicant for 550 East Falmouth Highway without prejudice.
Second. We've had a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now, McSweeney Companies Incorporated for a public hearing, definitive plan application to create a five-lot subdivision located on Palmer Avenue, adjacent to 711 Palmer Avenue, and it gives a map number. And if we could see that.
In fact, if you would be so kind, we have Michaela prepared to give the thumbnail on this application and give you sort of the short story about this. We've talked about this before, the staff presenting the thumbnail. So, if you got a moment?
Yeah. Uh-huh.
If you thought things were tricky earlier, let's see how this works.
Okay, it's rocky, Jim.
Okay.
That's where it is. You're right.
We haven't quite escaped Zoom.
Tom, just so you know, it says host disabled screen hearing.
Okay, we'll fix that. As they say in the big shows, it worked in rehearsal.
Look at this. He's gonna pop it up.
Yeah, wow. This is Michaela, the Assistant Town Planner.
Oh, wow. Hey!
So, with that, welcome. As many of you know, Michaela is not working in the office quite yet. She will be back, but she won't be back for tonight's meeting. So, as Charlotte and I have discussed previously, she'll give a brief thumbnail about what the application is. And you can take it from there, Michaela.
All right. So, hopefully you guys are all able to hear me and hopefully you guys are seeing my screen as well.
We're gonna have to turn off that sound.
All right. So, before you guys tonight is an application for a five-lot definitive subdivision. It's located off of Palmer Ave across from Gooding's Way. The five lots range from roughly 40,000 square feet to 40,419 square feet with a proposed 44-foot wide roadway with a cul-de-sac. The applicant is asking for a few waivers that they can go into some more detail, but specifically, they're asking for a waiver for the centerline, for the roadway to be a little bit closer to Gooding's Way, as well as sidewalks, street trees, and some grass plots. This is the parcel on the GIS map right here. So, as you can see, this is Gooding's Way. This is the proposed lot here. And then, give me just one quick second and I will make that a little bigger. Okay. Well, let me click that again.
No, it's the highway.
It's the highway?
Well, it did have the plan for you, but...
Well, we've got one on the screen here. We'll bring it up in just a moment.
Okay. It should be coming up.
Is it? Sure? What does it say?
Any chance to make it bigger so it can be seen that it's on Palmer Ave and backs up to the bike?
Yeah, we're gonna, we've got the plan on the podium. So, Michaela's doing the thumbnail and I'm almost certain that Bob meant we'll put a plan on the screen here and tell you all about it.
So, while the plan is loading, engineering did have time to review it. They had a few comments. I know that we have received a response to engineering's comments that I believe was sent out to the board late this afternoon. So, the planning staff hasn't had a chance to take a look at it because that was sent out at about 3 o'clock this afternoon. So, I also know that engineering has not had a chance to take a look at the response that we received to address some of those engineering comments that were sent back in the referral. It looks like it's...
If it's okay with you, Michaela, we will turn it over back to the chair.
Yes, I will stop screen sharing. That's okay with everybody.
Thank you. So, worked in rehearsal and fairly well at the show as well. Thank you, Michaela.
Okay. And it's my understanding from what Michaela said that, except for the things they've asked for the variance on, that it squares with the bylaws that apply to this.
To use terms from the vernacular, it's a relatively vanilla subdivision.
Thank you.
Five lot, cul-de-sac, just seeking some waivers.
Mr. Amant?
Hi again. Bob Amant, attorney for McSweeney Companies, Inc., the principals of which are Jen McSweeney and Brian McSweeney, who are right here in person. The plans were prepared by Holmes and McGrath, and Mike McGrath is here, and he'll talk about the plans. There are only a couple of things that, on a preliminary basis, I wanted to mention. I love the description of this as a vanilla subdivision. That suggests, looks like it's not too complex and likely to be approved. It's a short road, less than 500 square feet, well, less than 500. And you can see that there are five conforming as to frontage and width and area lots proposed on this five-acre parcel. It is true that this is a subdivision of a single parcel of property, but I think it's important to remind the board that this property was the subject of a approval not required plan reviewed and endorsed by the planning board in December of last year. And I should be able to pull that up. This is the plan that was endorsed. There was enough room on the lot, enough frontage. We were able to lay out five lots, although they are not exactly cookie cutter squares. They all have good building locations and that's been endorsed. We didn't record this plan, and we could record it, but we didn't simply because we felt that since we were going to come back to the planning board with a better plan, namely the subdivision plan that is before you, that it would be confusing to record this plan, have these five lots of record, and then record a new plan. Could be done, done all the time, but we just didn't see any need to record it. But the plan could be recorded. Now, the road that McGrath has designed is, I think he would tell you, and he knows better than I do, an excellent road. And it's a perfectly good road, but I think you need to, should just keep in mind that we're actually not creating additional lots from what we already have as a matter of right. We're just making better lots. And instead of having the possibility of five curb cuts on this portion of Palmer Avenue, we will have one curb cut located in what McGrath thinks is the best location with a street light. And so, it's a good, very good plan, we think. I just wanted you to remember that background. And we did get the engineering department referral last week. McGrath's been working at responding to it, has revised the plans to do such things as to show a street light, which wasn't shown on the initial plan. We had a lot of discussion about whether to ask for a waiver of that or not. But that and many other changes have been made in response to the engineering department. But there is some information that, as Mike has stated in his correspondence to the board today, that some variance with what the engineering department thinks should be done. And Mike has his opinions about that and can discuss. But I know the matter will be continued in order to have engineering's input, but hopefully this approval process can move along pretty quickly. So, I'm going to take you back to the plan that's actually before you and turn this over to Mike. Thanks.
Thank you.
Sorry, a little old school. I did email this color graphic.
It's on the podium.
It's on the podium?
Yes.
The existing road's probably down here, but that's the legal road.
I'm...
It changes to a dark hard line. Paper. It's on paper. Like 28A and East Falmouth, 20... What's the other one?
No, probably the steps. So, may I?
Sure, go ahead.
So, I sort of felt you, Mike, today. When the Internet went down, I felt like this is what happens when they run out of coal and the steam-operated Gutenberg press you have at home goes down. So, and you know, I mean, that was luck.
Ah, there it is.
Bring it up there.
There we go.
Home field advantage. I practiced a lot today. I practiced a lot. So, we want to make that a little bigger. Just do Control and Plus.
Oh, all right. Thank you.
You're welcome. And if you want to make it smaller, Control and Minus.
Control Plus, Control Minus. Okay, thank you. My name is Michael McGrath. I'm a registered professional land surveyor and a registered professional engineer. My firm prepared the plan and we did submit correspondence that today, and I apologize to the board and to Tom, but due to some certain things that happened at work and some illness, we've been very busy and running behind. And so, the bottom line is, what I would like to do is go over the changes that we've done in response to the town's comments. And also, this plan also will illustrate some of the things that are inherent in our design. One of the things I want to make sure you understand is when we, the bottom line is, this has been staked out on the ground and it's very difficult to see safe distance. So, we have shown on the plan and described that there will have to be a street opening permit applied for that shows the clearing for the minimum safe site distance for oncoming cars. When you go out to the site, it's funny. There's no shoulder on Palmer Avenue in this area, a very limited one. It's steep. So, the bottom line is that we are showing that. So the bottom line is that we are showing that. What I would like to do now is go through and talk about the engineering report. So I will now talk in the same order as the, as the referral. Now, one of the things that the, um, the, uh, first thing is, they said that we're not supposed to head, show, in their opinion, inter, interconnected, uh, catch bases. That is, we show a pipe going to a catch basin, and, I'm sorry, I should start here. There was a pipe that ran from here to here and then ran to the leaching pit. And the town said they prefer that, that, um, we put a manhole. So we've had to add a manhole that is now been, this is a revision that's shown on the, uh, planning profiles. Then, um, the subdivision regulations, uh, require, uh, that we submit copies of, uh, travers. I've, have invested, uh, o- over, well, way over a hundred thousand dollars to have GPS, um, enabled total data collectors, plus we have got software that connects the GPS, uh, receivers to our server. And when this regulation was written, I pointed out at the time there was a town employee who was doing surveys on the side. And so what it does is it robs me of the, uh, of work because he can download from your records coordinates. So what I've done is I've given you closures of everything. I just don't publish the coordinates. So the Board of Registration actually regulates land surveying, and they have standards for professional practices. And they do not require us to publish coordinates. And so I look at it as that you're supplementing a professional standard, and I don't think it's appropriate. But I've asked the planning board to waive that requirement. So when I filed the application, we included, uh, there was, uh, there was, uh, 23 pages, including copies of the Certified Abutters List, copies that, of things that were required. Even though we filed it, even though it was distributed, there were comments that questioned whether we did it or not. But the bottom line is that this centerline's been cleared and marked on the ground. The town assessors, um, did give you a certified list. Unfortunately, I had checked off the wrong block, so I ended up paying again to get the right block checked. So the town assessors has given you a certific, Certified Abutters List. Uh, they, the other issue was that they said that I didn't show this building, so I revised the plan to show the building. Then, um, the, the town requires that we bury the electric utilities. Comelitic will not design the actual utilities until we have an approved plan. So for, since you've had this regulation for 25 years, we've always shown the, um, electric cable and telephone in a generic manner, and they have been shown in a generic manner on this plan. The, uh, the revised plan that I submitted shows the electric route on this side and the water main on the other side. So we can't get Comelitic to design it until we get a recorded plan. They won't design it without an easement. So in the past, it's always been acceptable to show the generic, uh, location. Uh, there was a comment that we didn't have, um, a benchmark on the planning profile. We did have a benchmark in the submission, so it's been added. There is an existing pole that's right here. We show the pavement to be able to sweep around this. Uh, turning movement can easily get around this. And, um, so there was a comment that we're too close to the pole, but we have the same distance off the curb line as in most of the more rural roads, this five foot clearance. Uh, we, when we prepared the drainage, um, uh, calculations, the town engineer wanted us to, it, to file the drainage plan. So I've did, redid the drainage, and I refiled it. He also pointed out that he thought that we should have, uh, we should identify more or less where the houses are gonna be. Well, the bottom line is there's no particular reason to identify exactly where these houses are. So I basically picked an area that I thought would be modified to, to build a house. Uh, under the, if you look at the topography, there's obvious places to build it. So I have redone the calc, I have redone the calculations, uh, and I've shown a drainage map. And I've had to assume that each house is 1,800 square feet, because if you add the houses. But every roof has dry wells. So I'm not increasing the drainage because of that. I am increasing the drainage to account for the driveways, and I did, uh, assume a certain area on the driveways. The, uh, um, I assumed 2,400 square feet of driveway. And that's from an old assessment we did a long time ago. So it, it, in my experience, you've heard me testify before that I've designed 23 miles of roadways in Falmouth, and there's no flooding. And when I testified that, I got a call within a couple of days from a lady that lived at the cul-de-sac on Webster Street in North Falmouth. So I went there after rainstorm with boots. I waded through the puddle. I knocked on her door and said, "Can I borrow, borrow a rake?" She says, "A rake? What do you need a rake for?" I said, "Watch." So I went into the puddle. I raked the leaves off the catch basin framing grates, and in eight minutes, the road was dry. And you should've heard her. "You're a miracle man. What did you do with all that water?" I said, "It's very simple. Keep your framing grates open, uh, and free, and the drainage will work." So we are gonna put, we are obviously, your subdivision regulations require a street sign. You can't get a street opening permit without a street sign. So I've added a street sign to the plan because it wasn't shown. The, the regulations require, uh, um, um, streetlights. That introduces, uh, a certain kind of problem in that normally in the past, streetlights are put on light poles. Now, they, there's no poles to put the lights on. So what you've done in sud, some subdivisions is you've allowed the people to require the, I'm sorry, you've allowed the sud, subdivision to require that every house have a post light. In my subdivision, I live in Pine Bay State, there's 100 houses, and, um, there's one or two scattered streetlights, but almost all the roads are lit by, uh, the post lights, and they're fine, they're safe. So I do not believe in such a short road that you need to add, uh, specific streetlights. Uh, if you go out to the entrance to Ballamy, you can see that there's more, what I'm gonna call, urban lights. And, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't think we should be doing it. Uh, we did ask a waiver of the sidewalk in the original application. This road is so short, there's no reason to have a sidewalk. And the other point is, there's no sidewalk out on Palmer Avenue. And in the past, the towns waived the sidewalk, uh, quite a few times. So, um, there was also a comment that we're creating an easement. The plan shows a, a walking path easement that goes down this lot line and then turns and then connects to the bike path. This is the bike path. The intent was that the suddivision would give the five lot owners the right to walk down their path and to get to the bike path. The town engineer said, "Should you require monuments?" We've never required monuments in my, you know, over 50 years on easements. And I don't think you should start now, especially something that's gonna be a benefit to the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, uh... to the residents. I have also revised the plan because right in about here, there's an old ancient monument. And so what'll happen when they build the road, they're going to disturb the monument. I put a note on the plan, the revised plan, that they will put a metal marker in. And after the road's all constructed, we can put a metal marker in to replace that, that, uh, street monument. Then there's a comment that the center of there should be paved, uh, because of difficulty of trash trucks or snowplow. And Bourne went through a time period where we paved these, and they are so ugly. I would ask the board to, you know, you can go look at some of the, I could give you a couple of locations to go look, but I don't think we should start paving these, the centerline islands of the cul-de-sac. So, um, uh, and then they made a big point that, uh, we should be, um, aware that we have to get a street opening permit. Well, that, that's well known, that you cannot do work in public road without getting a s- street opening permit. So, um, anyways, uh, I have, uh, when I redid the drainage calculations with these new home sites and the new adjustments, I, I needed to add another leaching pit. So the plan has been revised to show, uh, new drainage easement in this location, plus a new, um, leaching pit. The leaching pits have been changed slightly, larger. And so as, uh, I think that these revisions are, um, have, have been made in, in, in response to the request of the, uh, town engineer. The town engineer also brought up that we might need a erosion and sediment control, um, permit. Uh, the subdivision regulations do not require us to do erosion control and sedimentation plan. If you disturb one acre of land in the United States of America, and the runoff will reach the waters of the United States of America. Waters of the United States of America are basically wetlands, or the ocean, or ponds, or lakes, then you do need to file, uh, an erosion control plan with the EPA. The reason the town knows about it is we have filed a couple for the oceanographic, for instance, and for one other project, um, an affordable housing project. But this project does not need an EPA, um, uh, uh, permit because there's no waters of the United States of America on this site or near the site. So I believe that the revisions we've made have been, uh, have answered all of the issues that have been brought up by the town engineer. And, and to me, um, there's no reason to, um, to, 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 um, basically go on and on and on about them. I believe that you could issue, um, an approval, um, when it's appropriately, and, uh, you could condition anything you think that needs to be further adjusted. But I believe that, um, this is an appropriate subdivision. I did, in the very beginning, we did ask for a waiver of the minimum, uh, setback between the centerline of Goodings Way and the centerline of this road. And, um, this, the, um, you have a regulation that requires a certain distance, and we don't have that distance. When I looked at the site on the ground, it, and I make it come over, it's, it does not really improve the site distance whatsoever. And, um, I believe that, um, this is an appropriate design, and the traffic that would come from, from five lots is not the kind of traffic you need to worry about, about the, the setbacks. And Goodings Way is actually a very low-density project. So, uh, to me, I, I think it's perfectly reasonable to issue that, uh, waiver. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have concerning the plan.
Could you repeat what it is you said shouldn't be paved, and you hope the town doesn't ask for it to be paved? I didn't understand what you were talking about.
The center of the cul-de-sac.
The bullseye, the bullseye, the green bullseye.
I don't know if you can see it, but see the green ring?
Yeah.
That's the way we've been building cul-de-sacs for 40 years? And now the town engineer is saying that this should all be pavement? Well, go up to Bourne, and I can give you some addresses, and it's, they, they're horrible. They're completely unsightly, so...
Go down to the bottom of our street, Mike, and just see that, too.
Well, I'm...
Yeah, there are some in Falmouth.
I react, sometimes I react stronger than I should, but the bottom line is, uh... Uh, to me, I think it's would be completely ugly to fill that in with pavement.
I agree with you, for what that's worth. We're waiting to hear from the town engineer.
Well, he hasn't seen this, obviously, but you get to make the decision.
Yes.
He makes referrals, and you, you and, and Tom, you know, work together and come up with an appropriate, appropriate decision. Uh, I stand ready to answer any questions anybody has.
Any questions, Bob?
Uh, one question, uh, I, I didn't bring my magnifying glass, so I can't, uh, read the, uh, numbers for the, uh, topo lines. Is this, what, how is the site pitched? Is it pitched down from Palmer Ave and towards the bike path, or, or does it go up?
These are two-foot contours.
Right.
And this is in the terminal moraine.
Yeah.
And one of the, the books about soils says that in Cape Cod, the terminal moraine is known for turbulent topography, meaning it goes all over the place.
Yeah, I read that.
So what happens is that there, that, for instance, this is elevation, I'm sorry, this is contour 30. So this is a low area.
Yeah.
This is contour 40.
Yeah, okay.
And there's another 40 here, so there's a little ridge.
Yeah.
Then it drops down again to 34. Then it comes up to 42, it climbs to 50, then it drops down to 42.
Okay, I, I just couldn't see any of the numbers.
So, yeah, so basically, there's a ridge here, and then this is, uh, um, this is higher and drains to the road. I believe the best home site on this, for instance, is over here. So I show in the drainage calculations that a driveway might be built over here. And then here, I didn't know where the hell to put the house because it's, it, it drops down and it comes back up, so... And then it's much higher there.
Yeah.
So I, uh, I just picked a, a generic place in here.
Subterranean house.
I've already done one of those.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, could you also...
Yes, I did a subterranean.
Uh, just point out where the edge of the pavement is, on Palmer Ave is right now?
Yeah, the edge of the pavement I'm gonna trace is...
Okay, that's what I, that's what I thought.
Yeah, it's, it's, you don't know much of a shoulder over here, but it's a 1905 layout.
Okay.
So...
So you would be coming out to that, that pavement now?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yes.
And then, uh, getting back to your list of waivers, uh, there's the one about the centerline from Goodings Way. Then there's a sidewalk, uh, grass plots and, uh, street trees, that's another one. Uh, driveway, uh, post lights in lieu of the street lights. Wave paving the center of the cul-de-sac. And then there was another, you requested a waiver about, uh, your coordinates?
Yes.
Your...
I don't wanna publish my coordinates.
Okay, so that's a waiver. I just, I'm just, I'm just trying to get a, a number of waivers.
I don't know why you think you can regulate the practice of land surveying.
Oh, I, I'm, not me. I'm, I'm just...
I shouldn't get...
I'm just asking for a list of the waivers, so, so I know what I'm, I'm looking at. So I have one, two, three, four, five, right now? So you're waiving the sidewalks, waiving the centerline, waiving the streetlights?
There's an assertion we're supposed to do an EIR. The regulation says we do an EIR if it's over five lots. We have five lots, we're not over.
Right.
So we don't need a waiver in that.
Okay.
The, I guess the waiver is the centerline between Goodings Way and our road.
Okay.
Waiver of the sidewalks, the grass strip and trees.
So three have been added.
Just, just a comment, I think this is a tremendous improvement over the, uh, previous ANR. I think this makes for a real nice neighborhood for people to walk and kids to live in, and it's a really big improvement. I like it a lot.
Yeah, oh, yeah, over that other one?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
This is much better to have five driveways coming right... This is much better to have five driveways coming right onto a narrow Palmer Ave.
Well, plus. Makes it a neighborhood, it's great.
Plus there's a, the site distance there, if you try to put five driveways in, you're gonna end up clearing a huge amount of area.
Right, right, no, this is a much better plan. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I, I have a few. Bob said that the A and R was not filed.
Not, not recorded?
Not recorded, I'm sorry, I used the wrong terminology somehow. Okay, when you look at the Marshall property there, um, the way it originally was and the way it was pictured on one of our sheets in here is that there, that diagonal line went all the way down and it looked like there was some flipping of property there. If you look up at the very, very.
You mean this line right here?
Point, no. Go all the way up to the bike path and then a diagonal starts down.
Well, Pat, I think you're actually thinking back about an earlier plan.
Could be.
Where there was an adjustment. And, uh, I don't believe we have that here. But it may show on the approval not required plan. A second?
It shows it on this plan that we had Bob in our packet. It still shows it there and this one was dated before.
What's your concern with it?
Okay, well, it's changed. And so my question is, do they have to come before us to do an adjustment of lot lines separate from what we're seeing here? With the Marshals?
The, um, the Marshals and the, uh, and McSweenes made a, a lot line adjustment. The Marshals, uh, some Marshals are here, by the way.
Okay.
They made, uh, a lot line adjustment. And you're right that, um, this line.
Right.
Used to go right straight like that.
Right.
I think I have that right.
Yep, you do.
There was an adjustment of lot lines so that, uh, and equal areas were exchanged, uh, as, as allowed. And that was done as an A and R plan, um, last summer. After the, um, lot lines were adjusted and, and that was, uh, done, the deeds were recorded, the lot lines were adjusted. Then the McSweenes submitted this A and R plan. And they own all the property that was, uh, being, that is divided there. And it's the same property that's being shown on the new subdivision plan. There were a couple of, um, things that might be noted. This triangle right here, uh, is part of the landscaping, um, along the street that, uh, uh, Marshals have just maintained in a magnificent fashion over the years. It's so beautiful. And so they have retained, uh, when they did the lot line adjustment, they have a right to continue landscaping that area. In addition, uh, there's a buffer twenty feet in length and width along the, behind their house just so that there isn't, um, uh, development right behind their property. So those were part of the arrangements that were made.
Well, that takes care of two of the additional questions that I had. What were those areas and because, okay. Now, the other question I have that I had not seen before, uh, Tom explained it to me, but perhaps it would bear some explaining so other people unless they already know this. Lots two through four are subject to a covenant dated blank to be recorded here with. And I've been on the board for a long time and I don't remember Brian ever having done covenants like this. So Tom explained to me that when you do a subdivision, there's a covenant that covers when things can be built upon. I, that's how he explained it to me.
Well, I'd be happy to discuss that with you.
Sure.
And I think I'd like to say that, that I think that, that language is, um, always required. And, uh, there's a requirement that there be a covenant. There's a requirement that there be a performance guarantee. When the planning board approves lots, uh, that are on a road, um, in a subdivision, the state law requires that there be a performance guarantee. And the requirement is that, um, until the road is built and the covenant is, is released, the lots cannot be conveyed or built upon, you can't get a building permit. Now, the exception is if you post a bond as opposed to a covenant. The covenant, uh, bond is a way of avoiding having to, uh, be restricted in the sale of the lots. But if you're gonna do that, you have to, um, like, you have to post the bond. And theoretically, the town could then take that money and finish, finish the road. So, um, I don't think that's anything new and I think it's, uh, generally that language is on the plan. And I think it's actually part of statutory requirement that the reference to be, covenant be on the plan. Maybe Tom.
Yeah, and just to expand upon that, if I may, uh, the, the covenant, uh, essentially says you can't convey or sell a lot until the board releases it. And the board releases them, doesn't release them until the road is put in place. Cause to build, you have to have frontage, you have to create that frontage rather than just have a paper street. In this case, it's just those three back lots that we subject to the covenant cause the two front lots have frontage on Palmer Avenue. So they are eligible for a building permit even though their frontage will be likely on McSweeney Lane as well as Palmer. So no covenant required on the first two, they have frontage on Palmer Ave. The back three, after the road's put in place, it's inspected, there's a bond to make sure that we finish the subdivision, drainage, top coat payment and any other punch list items. That those lots won't be able to be conveyed until that work is done. And it is fairly standard. And, uh, you know, uh, I, I follow up on a lot of stuff over my, you know, Brian's my buddy. And there was a lot of things that, you know, I, I've seen, uh, that I'm like, hm, I wonder how that happened. So, uh, this is perfectly appropriate and perfectly proper, uh, to have, uh, that note saying those three lots are subject to a covenant. So when they file the plan, uh, planning board approves the plan, we go through the appeal period. Uh, they go to the registry and they file the subdivision plan, the MLRs, they file a covenant with it. And so the two go hand in hand.
And like I said, I hadn't seen that. I, bond, yeah, I've seen that over time. I do have an additional question to the, what Mike colored in in green there, where some vegetation is gonna be removed. This is outside of the McSweeney property line. And Palmer and, Palmer Avenue curves to, to make that green area. Are any permits gonna be needed to do work in there to?
Oh, yes, and any work in the townway is gonna require a, uh, a, a street opening permit. So it's not just a curb cut, any work in there. Uh, in order, in order to do that work, the, uh, engineering department's gonna have to.
Okay, so that'll be an additional permit other than what you might be seeking?
And, and if I may, uh, under chapter eighty-seven, the Massachusetts general law, a street hearing, a, a street tree hearing is required. Cause any tree within the right of way, larger than one and a half inches in caliper, one foot up the tree, is considered a street tree. So the tree warden can cut down a tree, but if a private property owner wants to cut down a tree within the, within the, uh, road layout, there has to be a tree hearing and that tree hearing goes to the tree warden. If that street happens to be a scenic road, then that tree hearing comes to the planning board. So chapter eighty-seven, street trees, one and a half inch in diameter, one foot up, in addition to the road opening permit.
Just, uh, because I don't know, is this a scenic road designated?
I don't know. I'm still working on that, there's a couple of things we're still trying to figure out. Some of the intersections and.
It could easily be a scenic road. The two houses, the Marshall house and the one before it, are beautifully landscaped. I love driving by them.
Well, the scenic road is an action by, scenic road is an action by town meeting to designate these roads as scenic.
Right, but you'd think considering the way the rest of the road looks, they would've taken action. I think it's possible.
Okay, that covers everything that I had, thank you.
I have a question.
Paul?
Just for procedure, uh, we didn't announce the notice at the beginning of this public, uh, meeting.
Excuse me?
And the public, excuse me, publishing date of, uh, June sixth and June eleventh and thirteen of Buttes were notified by regular mail. The other comment I'd like to make is I don't think this is plain vanilla development. This is a very difficult site, topography and geographically too. I think you've tried hard to put that together. What I'm puzzled with, and you've addressed some of the issues, is the comments from the engineering department, which we should take up sometime. They defer to the planning board at least a dozen times on these issues. You've tried to address those, but I think that requires a bit of a discussion with this board and perhaps with the engineering department is what we're trying to do here. I was very surprised that so many items were deferred to the planning board.
Right, I saw that, but you know, we knew that we were going to wait to hear from engineering cause there wasn't time now, so is it okay with you to, to wait until then?
I've never seen that before, is all I'm saying.
Yeah, it is unusual.
Yes, my, my recommendation would be let's, uh, get the review, the revised plan, uh, from the engineering department and, and dig a little deeper into that. Uh, we've got, uh, not that we wanna hold anybody up, I never want to, we've got a hundred and thirty-five days to approve a subdivision. Uh, and we'll have it certainly approved well before then, well before October. Uh, there are probably, uh, an extended discussion about some of the waivers that have been discussed. Uh, one that I think there's very little discussion on is Mike's concern about, uh, the traverse lines. It's something that probably should've come out of our subdivision regulations a long time ago. Uh, so, uh, I, I, that's, that's the easiest one. Uh, I think that the, uh, road offset is one of the things the planning board has to look at. Uh, it's from the description of things, the fact that there's five buildable lots within, uh, A and R plan. Uh, the fact that we would put one curb cut for McSweeney Road versus five curb cuts. There's a lot of, uh, upside to, uh, granting that. Uh, absent that, you know, if you could, uh, be very tight to get, uh, those roads to line up, they may lose a lot. Uh, but I think considering the fact that there is five, uh, lots buildable with the A and R plan, uh, it's a good idea not to have them build that plan and to build this. Regarding the discussion of waivers, uh, some of those waivers about sidewalks and monuments and bounds, I think that's a, a, a discussion for another day. Uh, my take, being the guy who followed, someone who was here for twenty-eight years, is that in, having lived in other places, while everybody who buys a house today is gonna know there's an easement between those two lots for, to get to the bike path. But some future owners, two or three owners in the future, may not. So having bounds out there to identify that this is an easement to get to the bike path is a very good idea. And if you've got a, a walking way to get to the bike path, a sidewalk makes sense to get down the rest of the road, even if there's not sidewalks on Palmer Ave. Because there may be sidewalks on Palmer Ave at some point in the future. So I think there's a broader discussion about what those waivers are. Um, I'm, I'm a fan of grass in the, in the, uh, cul-de-sac cause, cause I, I never played street hockey. I came from Florida. Uh, but you know, you got, you got a better street hockey court with the paved cul-de-sac, but the trees and the greenery's nice, uh, for people who wanna do gardening there and a place for your dog to, to hop out to. So I think there's a larger discussion about some of those waivers. Uh, but let's see what engineering comes back with and, uh, when we continue this, uh, hearing, uh, to the next meeting, we'll have engineering report and, uh, a broader discussion about those waivers. But I think the offset for the street is, uh, given the options, is a, is a, is a pretty easy one for the planning board to look at and say, yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah, we'll put those off. John, did you have something you wanted to say?
I did, Pam, you wanna take Pam first if she has anything?
Pam, oh, I didn't see your hand up. Really?
I didn't know she had any questions, you were done at that end, so.
Yeah, she appeared not to.
Okay.
Well, go ahead.
I'll sit in front of her so you can't see her. Couple of questions, one, my first question is, I've never seen a subdivision planned for this board this small. Is this the applicant that provided this or the staff? We always have full-size plans here.
We have, uh, full-size plans.
It's very helpful to have full-size plans.
I, I've brought full-size plans.
One for each?
Yes, I brought ten.
Okay, that's my first question.
And our fi- our filing complied.
Planning department.
Yes, but I didn't, I, I didn't remember, I could go to the planning department, so.
We're open for business.
Thank you. Now Bob won't need his magnifying glass.
Yeah.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Did you call the plan beautiful, right?
We're not discussing you this evening. Okay, second question I have. Was there any, uh, thought giving to, given to, um, making this a planned residential subdivision instead of a full-size lot subdivision?
Bob?
Take one of you if you like, thank you.
That's a really good question and the answer is yes, a lot of thought was given to it. And, um, unfortunately, the rules applicable to planned residential development precludes us from doing it. You don't get to count any grades over twenty-five percent.
Thank you.
As part of the property. And when you do that in this case, you end up with less than five acres. You couldn't have the same number of lots and furthermore, uh, it prevented us from taking advantage of the rule in the, um, bylaw that allows for a bonus lot up to, I think, um, four. But in this case, you could have one bonus lot because the property of Butts Town Recreation Space, namely the bike path. But, uh, we couldn't do that in this case because of the, um, of the regulations. So we were not able to do, um, a cluster plan. And those are provisions that are in the zoning bylaw, not the subdivision rules and regulations, so we couldn't ask for waivers.
Okay, thank you. And, um, it didn't ask for, uh, a relief from our denitrification requirements. So I presume that's not something they're gonna ask for. So five lots or more, we require denitrification.
No, it's not five or more, it's more than five. That's why an environmental impact report is not required. The language is more than five.
Okay.
So that's important to.
All right, and then, then finally, um, the area you talked about clearing out on Palmer Avenue, I see it now, I can see, I couldn't see it on the, on the screen up here. Is that state-owned land or town-owned land? See, this big green, green area's gonna get cleared, is that what you're talking about, clearing?
Part of the layout.
Yes, it's part of the layout and I believe that.
Layout of your subdivision?
Palmer Ave.
No, it's part of the public road.
Okay, that's why I'm asking.
So we need to get a permit to clear it. And it's, I believe that the permit comes from the town engineer.
Because it's town-owned land or state-owned land, that's why I'm asking.
It used to be a county road a long time. And for a while, the county roads were administered by this state highway. But I believe in this case, it's, it, it, it's the town engineer. In any case, you could write an approval that says an appropriate permit to do the clearing has to be furnished before the work.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. No other questions?
No other questions?
No.
Well?
No.
All set?
And Pat Paul?
She can't see you.
Are there any questions from the public, anything you would like to ask? No? Well, we will move to continue this.
Uh, Madam Chairman, could I make, just make a couple of comments?
Mm-hmm.
The original plan did not show, uh, the light at the street. As Mr. McGrath has pointed out, uh, that's, uh, now shown. And I don't believe, and there was discussion about waivers regarding lights. I don't believe any other lights are required by the regulations. Uh, you're required to have a light at the beginning of the subdivision road. You're required to have a light at the end of the subdivision road if it's more than five hundred feet long. This is not more than five hundred feet long, so it's not required. And there's no provision in the subdivision rules and regulations requiring, um, post lights at, uh, the end of driveways. The other thing I wanted to make a reference to was the, uh, walking path that's, uh, sh- shown. Now, um, if what the engineering department is, uh, seeking in connection with, um, with monuments is monuments on each side of the three-foot easement that's on each, uh, path, that seems really unnecessary. There will be, uh, monuments at the lot corners. And nobody who buys either of those lots, uh, two or three, is not going to know that, uh, there's a walking, uh, path easement because it will be in, in the deed. a walking path easement because it will be in, in the deed. And I can't imagine anybody's going to be surprised. Furthermore, it's going to no doubt exist on the ground. But it's important to note that, that easement is not between the lots, it's on, three feet on each side of the, of the property line. So that easement is going to go across people's lots. Has been suggested that maybe it'd be nice if the public could enjoy that path and walk down McSweeney Lane and walk between lots two and three and be able to get to the bike path. That's not an agreeable provision for a host of reasons. But I wanted to point out, and if you look at the first page of the staff report, it has the plan assessor's map that shows a big chunk of the nearby property. Carlson Lane is, starts right here. Some of you may remember that the big building that's in there was temporarily the library a couple of years ago. And if you go down Carlson Lane, which is right there, you come to the bike path, including where there's a cleared area where a gazebo has been built and where one can buy snacks and it's designed to get to the bike path. And the distance from this point down Carlson Lane to the bike path is not much more at all than the distance from here going all the way through the property on a rather narrow woods, woods path. So I don't think there's any public benefit and it's simply not an available option as far as the developer is concerned. Thank you.
Jim, did you want to say something?
No, I'm all set.
Okay. We all set? Okay.
May I make a motion?
Yes.
I move.
Madam Chair, Michaela's got a couple other things to add.
Hi, yes, the parcel is not in the coastal plain, it's not in wetlands. I'm happy to share the screen with the GIS map if the board would like to see it, but it is outside of kind of actually everything, basically.
That's regarding the nitrogen septic system. And the scenic road?
Yeah, it is not a scenic road.
All right, not voted.
Oh, couldn't be.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for being here.
Thank you, Michaela.
I move that we continue the McSweeney Company's definitive plan discussion to July 13th, 2021, same time, same place.
Second. And does that work for your schedule? Okay.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Good, thank you very much, yeah, good presentation. Looks like a good plan. Now, we've got some items for discussion. FCTV episode on zoning changes, Jim, is that you?
No.
Oh, oh, wait a minute. I thought it was. Who's speaking to this?
Oh, FCTV, oh, this is a discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, I'm sorry, I thought it was an application.
Why don't you really start them?
No, no, I know, we're already in discussions, I didn't realize we're moving along that fast, so we're done with all the public hearings.
Yeah.
Yes, I would like to suggest that we, that yourself, myself and John record a meeting with FCTV similar to, as what we did for the accessory apartment bylaw, talking just a casual conversation about all the pluses and minuses with the intent that it is be deliverable to all the town meeting members, so it gives them a great explanation of what we're doing. And it really worked extremely well when we did the look, when we did the accessory apartment plan, because when the time came for the meeting, all the town meeting members already knew everything about it.
This is about the mixed residential and commercial?
Yes, yes.
Our new bylaw?
Yes.
Great, I don't know if we need, does anyone have a problem with that, if we go ahead with it? Nope, nope, okay, we're going to do that. Davis Straits Working Group, we know that we, we thought, we had decided that it would be Jim and Pat, but we were going to hold off to see if there were any changes in that. Has there been a change that we know about? Then can we designate Jim and Pat definitely to be our representatives on the combined Board of Selectmen and Planning Board group? Yeah, Paul?
Last night in this room, the planning board voted to put Megan English-Bragg on that committee.
The selectmen did.
So Megan and who?
And Anji.
And Anji?
Yes.
Okay, great. That'll be an interesting thing to do. We'll look forward to hearing your reports.
And if I may just expand on that a little bit?
Mm-hmm.
So regarding our representative from the building community, you may have seen, there was an article in the, in the Enterprise about that. It got the part correct about, we're looking for a representative, sort of shortchanged the Davis Straits area in the article. Since then, I've gotten a couple of phone calls from a couple of folks. One seemed more interested in building something there than serving on the committee, I'm following up with another. But I think that since we haven't had time since the article came out, that we can sort of hold off until our July 13th meeting to appoint that representative from the building community. The conversations I had, the emails I had with Union Studio, is they're still working through documents and things like that, and they don't anticipate having anything until that point anyhow. So I think on July 13, we would be able, be in a very good position to, you know, basically identify the representative of the development community.
Well, Tom, what's the advantage in waiting? Because the fellow coming from Pine Hills sounds as if he'd be a tremendous addition to the group and we wouldn't want him to float away from our not acting on his offer to serve.
In fact, he sent me a text after he saw the article in the paper, he says, is this me I lost my job?
Yeah.
I'm like, no, no. I said, you know, the planning board asked for, to cast a broader net, to make sure that we were, you know, you know, not sort of picking somebody without, you know, inviting more folk to the party. So he's still quite interested in it, he liked the fact that, that John Druly and he are old friends, apparently they met when he was three.
I'm older than he is.
No, exactly.
By far.
So, so, you know, Tony's still very much interested in, but we wanted to make sure that, you know, we, we weren't, you know, sort of stacking the deck and.
Well, am I the only one who thinks it's kind of disingenuous to ask the public, hey, anybody out there, when we already know who we think we're going to?
Well, I think we knew that, but I think, I think if people, and I said, I've talked to two people who've contacted me, there's two other people I haven't had a chance to talk with. So I think if people express an interest, and it's on me that I haven't had a chance to call these folks, all these folks back, two of which I heard from yesterday.
Jim?
I think we should move ahead and tell anyone else that's interested, they're welcome to come and sit in the meetings and join us. I think we need, we have somebody that's ready to be an official part of the committee, but we want everyone to come in. I like, we, these are going to be open meetings and people should come and talk, and if somebody's really interested, they can come to all the meetings.
As you know, I won't fight you on that.
No, I don't know, I think it's the way to go, I really think, I'd like to keep this thing moving and not slow it down anymore.
We're well with the LCP that way.
Yeah.
Well, I don't like the feeling that we've got innovation out there.
No, no, I just, I want to move this thing, keep it moving.
Yep.
So was that, was that a motion from someone on the board to appoint Tony Green?
I move.
Well, John wants to say something.
John's already got me, sorry.
Okay.
I'm not making a motion.
What you saying?
You make a motion and I still want to make a, I want to make a statement.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead and make your motion, and name the person.
I've just remembered his last name was Green.
Tony Green.
Tony Green. I recommend, I'd like to move that Tony Green be appointed to the working group.
There's a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Okay, the reason I asked for a two-week delay was because there's always conversation, I hear conversation, I don't, I don't get involved in politics, but I hear conversation about the fix is in, we have a shadow government, they already decided, why should I apply? So this is an important, this can be a very important position for our community. And Mr. Green either reached out to Tom or Tom reached out to him, they're both active in the Plymouth area. And I don't want our community to feel like they didn't have an opportunity to participate because the fix was in. So that's why I asked for a two-week delay to see if any other applicants come in. If he gets applicants, we should at least hear what their resume is or what their, what their thoughts would be, and then vote. And if we don't get any, we don't get any, but.
We have had our delay, we have that opportunity, are you comfortable voting now?
Tom says he's had two people require, apply or reach out to him, he hasn't even had a chance to talk to them. You can have your vote, I'm going to have my vote.
Yeah, I see that.
I don't mind waiting.
I just wanted to explain why I suggested that.
I don't mind waiting. I withdraw it, I think John, I would rather not have a perception that there's anything being done here, I think it's more important to move forward, and if that's the case, I think we can afford to wait. Tom was, Tom was away and it's, it's a fact of life, we're just going to deal with the, he wasn't here, we've got to talk to people, it's normal.
I think the article, was the article last Friday or Friday before?
No, last Friday.
So like, two days, three days ago, four days ago?
Yeah.
And I know of Mr. Green, I know, I mean, I worked for his family for a long time, tremendous, tremendous applicant.
No, we know this isn't anything in reaction to that.
I just, I just don't want, I don't want the people in our town to feel like they didn't have an opportunity.
We're apparently going to provide that opportunity even though it feels like the fix is in, that's what's odd to me.
Well, you're the chairman. Chairperson.
I think Mr. Green is eminently qualified, I was prepared to vote in favor of him last time. Since we opened the door to other applicants, we have no option but to wait and see who comes in and then vote at that time.
Yeah.
I don't think we can deck a vote now and appoint him because he already opened the door for other candidates, so we need to follow that through.
Who are the other candidates?
Oh, they're to be talked to. Jim, did you want to agree with that point of view?
I would make.
It doesn't sound right, we're waiting for something we don't know.
I would like to make a motion though.
Go ahead.
A motion that whoever the applicant we decide on, we're going to vote on July 13th.
Thank you, so we have a date certain when we will move forward?
Yes.
Okay, Jim?
I was going to absolutely agree with John, I mean, I, I think there are perceptions in Falmouth that the fix is in before anything's been even made public. And I just like the idea of extending it, whoever wants to get in touch with Tom to talk about what exactly the role would be for this position. And so I, I'm going to agree with John and let's see who else may make an inquiry.
Well, I believe that Jim withdrew his motion.
Yep.
So we don't have any decision to make, but we will have a decision on the 13th.
I made the motion, was it seconded?
I seconded.
Paul in favor voting on the 13th?
Aye.
That's what we're going to do, okay, that's good. I had another problem with actually, oh.
I abstain.
Six, zero. We had, I had another problem with that article. It didn't define the Davis Straits project correctly.
Correct.
That's right.
Which is a really big problem, it gave the sense that, wait, it's this little piece right here, and it isn't. So we need to set about correcting that as quickly as we can, now that that's out here.
Yeah, the report on WCAI this morning, that was, who's, the article in the Enterprise spawned their interest, they reported it correctly. And there was a quote from the town planner, because that guy will talk to anybody. So clearly we know that it's that 70-acre site and Carrie sort of brought it down to that sort of, that image from our density done right.
Yeah, clearly he looked at the picture, which was good, so that we're getting the word out there, but it was, it created a wrong.
But other than that, I think she did a good job.
She did, it's nice to get the publicity on the project.
And front page above the fold, for the people who remember what the fold of a newspaper is.
Right.
It's a good spot for, for a story.
But I just have to tell you, you couldn't believe the amount of phone calls I got, that people thought it was actually moving forward immediately, they just read, they didn't understand, they didn't read the article, they just assumed that the development's happening. They didn't really read that this is two years away, you're going to be working on it, it just, it's just the way the paper, sometimes that's the way the public reads, only sees what they, they think they want to see.
A myriad impressions.
Yep.
Are we ready to move on to Lewis Neck? Bob, do you want to take this one? Aren't you the one talking about Lewis Neck?
Well, actually, I thought I might be.
Oh, it's an update.
Alrighty, so you have in your, in your book, and you had an update to it on the table today about the improvements to Lewis Neck Road. Mr. Fender, the person who, who made those up, those, the paving and the improvements is here this evening as well. So the planning board made a determination of access that essentially said the road had to be 15 feet wide with a one-foot Cape Cod berm. We went out and did inspections on, yesterday, and determined that the road is in fact 15 to 16 feet wide, and that's just fine. Installation of three leach and catch basins inspected by the Falmouth Engineering Division. They had looked at those, they had looked previously at the drainage calculations and determined the drainage calculations were proper. They did want a certification from the design engineer that it is, it is designed, built to the spec as required, so we're waiting for that from the, from the plans. I'm going to bring up the plan itself, I'll just talk about the rest of the parts of the development here. Back off that one click just so we can see everything. That's a pretty good shot of everything, I think. So here you see on the plan, these green identified parcels, they're all along Lewis Neck Road. For each of those parcels, so condition number three in the determination of access was that easements to be provided for the installation and proper operation of drainage structures on private property. So those structures are here and we have easements for those three structures on the property. Next, for easements, for improvements, easements to be provided for the improvement of the pavement on private property to allow and ensure that in addition to the roadway, a minimum is cleared width of 18 feet and a minimum cleared height of 13 feet can be maintained to ensure emergency access. So Mr. Fender used a consent and agreement form that he got from a local attorney and provided those and received those back to everybody along Lewis Neck Road. So parcel two, parcel two A, one A, C, two and one, all provided these consent agreements. And you can see that I've highlighted them in green here and put C and A on all of those. The issue that is still outstanding is that the area that you see here in orange, this is property owned by folks who live on Carroll Avenue. Their property goes on to, and in some cases here, almost fully across Lewis Neck Road. Those folks had not provided any consent and agreements for that piece of property. It has been the contention of the town planner as well as town council that if you're going to improve someone's property and you're going to pave it, you need to have their permission. There is a, there is these ideas of a prescriptive easement, where if someone has open and notorious use of a piece of property for 20 years, they can continue to use that because they have done so, but that is to pass and repass the property and not necessarily to make improvements on it. Grading the road and maintaining the road is different from improving the road. There is also a concept of, of a, of adverse possession, where I've used this, where I've mowed your grass for 20 years, I'm now going to go to court and say, you know, I've acted on this piece of property as it's my own for 20 years, and now I'm going to go to court and say, here I can document that for 20 years I've done this, and I get to go to court and they give me your property by adverse possession because I've treated it as my own for 20 years. All these properties along Carroll Avenue are land court properties. And town council says there is no adverse possession of land court properties. So the other fact is that the parties at play here, the three that I've been dealing with, the Pildesses originally, they subdivided their land in 2011, which was 10 years ago. Mr. Fender purchased his property in 2018, which was three years ago. And Falmouth Housing Trust purchased their property in 2019. So none of these parties that are sort of on the, on the road at this point have really got 20 years of open and notorious. have really got twenty years of, uh, of, uh, of open and notorious, uh, access on the site.
But didn't you just say that because land court, they ca, they can't get adverse possession? Aren't we confusing the issue?
No, I'm, I'm pointing out there's two different ways, some are go, a prescriptive easement or adverse possession.
But even a prescriptive, you, don't they have to go to court and get it?
I, that is, that is, that is-
It's not something that happens by using it. You have to get a judge to say it's yours.
That's my understanding, that's town council's understanding. I've asked, I've asked-
I was just getting confused.
Well, I've asked council, he can, you know, put that for me in print, but he's, he's, he's got a lot of stuff on his plate right now.
I got it, I, I'm clear.
So that remains the outstanding issue on this is, uh, do you get to, you know, improve someone else's land without their property, without their permission? Uh, do you have to go to some level of proof, typically a court'll ought to say, and I'm not an attorney, that this is, this, this, this codifies what we understand on the property? And that remains the outstanding issue, uh, on, uh, the, the property, is that the improvements have been made, but we don't know, per the planning board's decision and per council, if, you know, if they have, you know, proper rights and proper easements to be able to do that sort of work.
John?
Well, what, what, why should we be involved in this part of it? They, they, there's a paper here that says that they had the rights to travel over that property since nineteen oh one on a plan. It showed on a plan nineteen oh one. I mean, if this was an A and R plan, one of the conditions is that it's on, um, a way that was in existence before town zoning, which was nineteen twenty seven. I mean, I'm not saying this was an A and R, but it, it, I think it was an A and R. I just don't understand why, uh, you know, he was asked to improve the roadway, he improved it, and he paved it. What's that got to do with us? I don't understand what that, I don't, I mean, if they wanna sue him for it, that's up to them. That's my feeling. That's private property. I don't understand why we need to be involved in this.
Tom, what's your answer to that?
Well, uh, at, at some point, uh, Mr. Fender is gonna come to you and say, I like an A and R plan. I like, uh, uh, this, an A and R approval on my piece of land, based on the planning board's determination of access. And in the planning board's determination of access, they say consistently that this does not give you permission to go on someone else's property and appro, and approve it. So the question is, does the planning board, uh, does anybody else say, well, we are going to give someone a right, we're going to give someone a benefit, uh, for something that they did, that they, you know, may or may not have been able to, to do? And that's, and that's that gray area that-
I don't wanna be argumentative, but could you explain to me who "they" is, when you say, "they say" that?
Uh, well, town council, uh, has said, uh, you don't get to just go out there and pave someone's property. This was a town project. If we were paving a road, and apparently this has happened to the town before, where we paved someone else's private property, uh, we used their land without their permission and without just compensation.
But, but it's not, and because it's paved, why, why, why should Mr. Fender be punished because he paved the road? What, I mean, that was, that got to do with us?
I don't think Mr. Fender's being punished for paving the road. The question is, does he have a right to pave the road? And does he get the benefit of paving the road if he didn't have the right to pave it in the first place?
My understanding is, uh, it, a building permit was issued to him, and then it was rescinded for some reason.
Yes, 'cause I sent and wrote a memo that says, "It's not a buildable lot. The planning board hasn't released the lot." The planning board hasn't, in their opinion, made a designation that there is suitable grades with in paid construction for this. A building permit should not be issued.
So-
And he issued it, and I don't know why.
So if Mr. Fender came back in front of us to say that the road is suitable width, et cetera, et cetera, we could vote on him getting, making a buildable lot?
If he came with an A and R plan, uh, you could entertain it, and the board could take a vote on it, absolutely.
Okay. I, I just don't understand why we're involved with, whether it's paved, not paved, and it's not, you know, we don't own that land. It's got nothing to do with us. And, and the people that, that it sits on have not come in here, and, you know, everybody down that road has the right to travel over it.
We have a member of the public who wants to give us some information on it. Sir?
Is he licensed?
Oh.
Huh?
Yes. Mike. He's gonna give us his name.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Tom. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ma, um, Madam Chairperson and, uh, planning board members. Just a couple of things I wanted to say from my perspective, because I-
Could you identify yourself?
My name's Michael Bosselli from Falmouth Engineering, and I prepared the plan that is up on the screen. And I worked with Mr. Fender in an effort to create adequate access to these properties, the goal of which was, um, to provide better and improved access to these lots, with the goal of, uh, Mr. Fender being able to develop not only one, which he has, but a second one, uh, that this board, um, endorsed an A and R, that condition that he could not develop it until he provided adequate access. And we had discussions before this board about what constitutes adequate access. We provided a plan that showed how to provide adequate access by making it wide enough, proper drainage. And then it was acknowledged that that provides adequate access. There was some language about getting proper permissions and easements, et cetera. But the end result of your, um, advice was, Mr. Fender proceeded and, um, paved the road to the proper widths alignment and provided drainage, so it meets the definition of adequate access. Now, um, Mr. Fender went to great lengths when he did pave the road to not change the edge alignment on the properties that, um, have, uh, real frontage on, and, and gain their access. The people that are on Carroll, Carroll Avenue, all of the properties on the east side of the road, these lots, gain their access over here. Um, Mr. Fender went to great lengths, and we designed it with his input so that the edge of the old dirt road that was full of potholes remained coincident with the new paved road. So, um, access was made safer and, uh, more comfortable and, um, better for all of the residents who have used the road to gain access. So, um, the people on Carroll Ave were not further impacted at all. The road was basically changed from dirt with, full of potholes that, there's actually minutes where you folks, uh, discussed and agonized over whether you fill them with potholes with gravel and how you do it. You know, where do we cross the line from maintenance to improvement, I guess is the point? We, we say we're maintaining it, so by that I mean it's paved, it's maintained, so it doesn't have to be continually maintained. Through this whole process, and I'm not a lawyer either, um, but there have been a, uh, attorneys that have rendered opinions, and we, we were able to secure a copy of some minutes from the planning board on November fifth, twenty nineteen, when there was some discussion. And there's a, um, a quote from, uh, town council Frank Duffy, uh, in response to, I think, um, some comments made by attorney, uh, Moynihan, where, and I'm gonna quote, uh, Mr. Duffy, "I do agree with attorney Moynihan that as the owner, you have the right to go and make impro, improvements." So I don't know if we're talking about semantics or, or not, but that's one attorney that said that, and it's in re, uh, record minutes. Attorney Moynihan at one point made a statement, um, um, she represents, um, Falmouth Housing Trust, who's doing a development on the road and in permitting, um, where, where she made a comment that, um, uh, making reference to the people on Carroll Ave, "The certificates of title and land court plans reference Lewis Neck. The certificates of title for these Carroll Anne lots indicate that," and then she puts it in quotes, "So much of the land within the limits of the Cot Road is subject to its use by all those lawfully entitled there too." Suggesting that the people that have traveled over that Cotway for eons and may have land, uh, adjacent to it, that meaning the Western people, um, have a right to continue to use that and, and use it safely, and that they should be able to, um, make it what it needs to be, and I'll use the word in quotes, "improved," so that they have safe access. So, all of the people that, uh, have and use this road on a regular basis are, are thrilled that it's been improved. It's safer, um, it meets the standards that you impose for adequate access. And this matter, uh, of, of whether or not other easements are needed from the people on Carroll Ave, uh, we, we just don't believe should be an issue. And it, it, uh, we don't think it's an issue, because no one on the Carroll Ave and you, uh, properties, who've, are very much aware that the road is paved, have said, had a, s, said, said a word. So we think we're, we've done, Mr. Fender has done what he needs to do to provide the adequate access.
Mike, is it accurate to say that the land that's colored orange is all on the, uh, eastern side, um, of the fence that's there? There was a, a fence all along, uh, that property?
All that orange, um, and I'll zoom in a little bit. All that orange is the new pavement, and this edge is coincident with what used to be the old dirt edge that's now the-
So they haven't increased the size of the road on the side on which they have no ownership of the land?
There was no increase in-
But they haven't gotten permission from the people who actually own the land?
No, but there was no increase in pavement on the east side.
Right, so they didn't increase?
They didn't increase, yes, and those fences you make reference to.
But they didn't get permission?
No, they, because Mr. Fender is of the, of the opinion he doesn't need to get, uh, permission.
Has he even talked to them?
Mr. Fender had actually, um, a Zoom meeting with all those folks and talked about this, and I'll, I'll let him speak to that. But I just wanted to put a little, um, perspective on what, how we got here.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, the, the issue isn't whether the road's been improved, uh, 'cause it's definitely been improved. The issue is that it's on someone else's property, you know, part of it is on someone else's property. And that's, that's what I, I think we're looking for a resolution on, whether it's from the people on, uh, Carroll Lane or-
Right.
Or what, you know, before, uh, we get into the, uh, into, into that. I mean, that, that's my question anyways, is how, how does that get resolved?
And it's my question. You can't just come along and put asphalt on my land without my permission. You have to do something first, and that hasn't happened.
Yeah, that's, that's something that-
Is there someone else who wishes to speak?
Yeah, Mr. Fender's here.
Go ahead.
I'm William Fender, I'm the one that developed it. I've invested over a hundred thousand dollars doing it, and, um, before I paved it, I checked with Laura Moynihan, and she texted me this, like, I have copies for everybody, in her opinion. She said I had the right to pave it.
Yeah, we, we've got a copy of that.
That should be in their packets, I think, Bill.
Yeah, it is. No, I think we've got it.
I'll take one.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think I'd like one, too, please. Could we have-
Two.
This woman lied to us under this keeping my shot.
Right.
I'm gonna accuse myself.
You don't wanna say that?
I just don't, no, I don't wanna say anything.
Okay.
I've said enough, I've said it all the time, and you all voted over me every time I did it, so.
Yeah, that's right.
I'm just gonna be quiet. I happen to like you, I don't, it's bad.
Thank you.
Bad road.
We did. But here we are.
See, it's in the packet there.
Did anyone else on the board wanna say anything about this?
You're done, Bill?
Oh.
I can answer any questions you want, but I did have, I did check with the people on Carroll Ave, Pat, uh, what was it?
Farrell.
Yeah, Farrell. Um, she went door to door and with the, uh, uh, paper, tried to see if they would sign it. None of them wanted to get involved in it. Most of them slammed the door in their face, just didn't wanna talk to her at all. Um, some did, and, but they said, "When, I'm not against it, but I don't wanna sign anything." And, uh, that's the way they were. And so I, I kinda waited a while before I did go and pave it, but after, um, talking with Laura Moynihan, she told me I had the right to pay, and her, she's a lawyer, obviously, you know her.
Right.
In her opinion, she, she felt that I had the right to improve the road. Um, and, and even though it was on their land, it, it's, um, that road's been there since nineteen oh, 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 one. There's record of it before zoning was even there. And, um, she felt that I had the right to do it. I, after I paved it, um, there was just one person that said something to me, and because the road was lowered a little bit, she said, "I can't get in." She has her landscaper come in and out, and, uh, we went over and fixed it for her. And she thanked me very much for getting, taking care of it so quickly. Other than that, I've had, um, no complaints. We did a Zoom meeting. Their biggest concern was if somebody, um, hits my fence or damaged my fence, who's gonna pay for it? And I gave them, I said, I gave them my cell phone number. I said, "If you have any problem with anything, call me." I never got a single call, except that one lady that did, did call me, and we took care of what she wanted done.
Mr. Fender, I appreciate all the money you've put into it, the time and the effort and so forth, but I'd like you to see the box that we're in. Laura's a lawyer, Frank Duffy's a lawyer, he's our town council. It's not easy for us to ignore, uh, what he thinks and what he says. In fact, we don't do it. So I think that we're not going to make any kind of, we wouldn't be making a decision tonight anyway, but it-
Wasn't there a statement, uh, with Falmouth Housing Trust that, that he said, Frank Duffy said, that they were, "You're allowed to improve?" I mean, I've got that, those minutes from, uh, that was at the planning board meeting for Falmouth Housing Trust, but, um...
Yeah, I'll be happy to speak to that. And like I said, I, I anticipate that Frank will have something for us in print, other than our conversations and our emails back and forth, which I don't share, 'cause they're... Uh, but what Frank was referring to at that point was, uh, the rights to improve a road under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter one eighty-seven, Section five. Installation of public utility services for abutting owners on private ways authorized. The owners of real estate abutting on a private way that have deeded rights, uh, may, and I'm skipping ahead, uh, may, uh, under this said private ways or other ways, install pipes, conduits, manholes, and other apertains necessary for the transmission of electricity, gas, telephone, water, sewer, services, and such facilities that reasonably, uh, don't obstruct that private way. So those improvements were related to utilities. Uh, he said he's not aware of anyone using Chapter one eighty-seven, Section five, uh, for paving, uh, but specifically under Massachusetts General Law, that is about installation of public utilities on a private way. So like I said, Frank and I have had a, a number of discussions about this, a number of emails, and I was hoping to have something from him in print today. But, uh, he just, this hasn't got to it on his, on his, uh, on his list of things he's got on his desk.
Well, the, the board is in, in a really awkward position, because I recall the time that we put into it, the conversations we had, the things we had to say about the pothole, the puddles, the trees to close to the road, the whole series of it. And certainly it sounded as if, uh, the road's the problem, the condition of the road's the problem, and we didn't discuss this ownership problem at that time, as far as I can remember. So it's misleading in a way. I can see how we got here. And we, uh, we'll wait and see what, uh, Frank has to say to us in writing, and take a look at it. Paul?
Mr. Fender, I admire your efforts to try to deal with the access to the property you own. Uh, I mean, you've worked very hard. My understanding is, you went to every property owner on the south side, or I should say, the, the west side, and you have an agreement from them to move forward, and they contributed a little, an amount of money per house to the improvements. Is that correct? How difficult would it be to go to Carroll Avenue and have a sketch and say, "Do you agree that we can continue to use this edge of your property?" Would that solve it? I mean, it looks like there's only about ten properties. You've done that already, or is that beyond?
I, I, I feel that some of them wouldn't have a problem with it, but I know some, uh, they won't even talk to us. They, they wouldn't even talk to Pat Farrell, who had had a party at her house and invited all the people, and they came over, and she couldn't believe it, when she went over trying to talk to him about that we were gonna be paving the road. "Would you sign this thing?" And they just said, "I don't wanna get involved." And they didn't say no, but they didn't, they just said they didn't wanna get involved, nope. And so, you know, I didn't, I, I thought, you know, possibly I'd hear from somebody when, uh, I did pave it, but I thought I had the right to do it, and that's why I spent a lot of money to do it, to get a buildable lot.
John, sorry, couldn't see.
Okay, Madam Chair, again-
Okay, and I'm sure, again, this is how I, I see it. That it's in the people that own, that own the land on Carol Ave, it's in their deeds, that this way crosses over their land.
Right.
And that way was there before, since nineteen oh, one, at least, before they built any, before there were any house lots there. So, yeah, anybody can go there and travel over their land, it's in, it's in their deeds that you have the right to travel over it. I don't understand why a gravel road or a paved road, what's the difference? I don't understand why we are getting involved in that. I just don't understand it.
We were initially involved in it because of the safety situation, with a narrow road and bad condition. That's how we got involved.
Yes, but it got corrected.
Yes, but I'm just saying how we got involved.
Yeah, but why are we involved now? That's what, that's what I don't understand.
Pat?
There's not a question whether he has the right to go over their land. Everybody on that street, there's town water on that road that was put in before Mr. Fender bought his land there. I, I mean, all the improvements have been made. Whether it's paved or not paved, that's like splitting hairs, and I don't understand it.
I may. It may be the perception, because some of them do like the fact that it's paved, but they don't want to get involved. But it may be the perception that if they sign anything, they are giving up their property rights.
All right, everybody feels like that, sure.
Yes, but it may be as simple as signing permission to have it paved, but it also states that in no way does this give up the property rights that I have enjoyed in my deed.
Right, it does.
It may be just that simple. I don't know. And I think that should be attempted, to acknowledge that they are not giving up their property rights by having that way that is acknowledged in their deeds paved.
I, I personally feel, if I was Mr. Fender, I would put an application in for an A and R, come in front of this board. We, we publicize it. If people from Carol Ave want to come and complain about it, let them come and talk to us about it. If not-
I know, but I know the difficulties. He's explaining it.
I hear, I hear it too.
So I'm just saying it may be as simple as acknowledging their property rights.
They, they may not even know that it's in their deeds.
That's right. That's exactly what I'm saying.
I got a new house, okay, I'm happy.
They don't know what's in their deeds.
Right, I mean, but I, I just think it's, I think it's not our problem. It's not, it's not something-
It's not our problem, John, but I'm looking to say, maybe there is a solution that could happen.
If we do nothing, it doesn't resolve Mr. Fender's problem.
No, it does not.
So it is our problem. We, we have all gotten into this together. We need to lend ourselves to a solution.
Can I add one thing? Sorry to interrupt.
Mike.
Just from a perspective point of way, it's, it's almost like that this road is referenced as a car path. Back in the day, we didn't have pavement, and, and we were dealing with potholes and ruts in, in, in ill-maintained roads, and we found a new invention called pavement. So to me, it's as simple as we've made a way that you cannot have to fix potholes. Doesn't change rights, doesn't impede, it doesn't obstruct. Tom used the words instruct, obstruct when he was referring to Chapter 137. Utilities are things that may obstruct. Putting a, a, a layer of pavement on an old gravel road because we've learned that they, they are easier to maintain doesn't change anyone's rights or impact anyone's rights. It just, it just helps people use the road more efficiently.
But my point, Mike, was they may not know that. And it may be as simple as acknowledging that they are not giving up any rights to their property.
Could be, but we're kind of skeptical on that.
Well, and I understand that too.
I think we're all repeating ourselves. We're not gonna get anywhere tonight. We'll be getting something from, from Frank Duffy, and could we get that by the next meeting so we don't drag it out further?
Yeah, I, I, like I said, I was-
Yeah.
You know, you, you can't lean on somebody who's working as hard as they can, but I leaned on him even though he's working as hard as he can.
He can, actually.
I know, you, you've been to my office. That, of course, is a joke.
Yeah, thank you. So we'll try, but I, I think we also need to accept some responsibility here. Thank you, Mr. Fender, for all the efforts that you've made. And Mike, thank you. Okay, we have one more item. Two more, actually. Pam's Way Bonus Lots. Who wishes to speak to that? Tom?
All righty, Mr. Ament is here as well to this. So if, if I start off, so we received a, a letter and a draft release of covenant from Bob Ament regarding the two bonus lots on Sunrise Estates on Pam's Way. You may recall, a long time ago, there were bonus lots in our subdivision, in our zoning bylaw. That went away. The planning board revived a special permit that allowed those two bonus lots to be sold. We then extended that deadline for another two years. And now with the very hyper real estate market, it's apparently come to the time where someone can sell a lot and be able to give the town the $200,000 per bonus lot that was originally envisioned, and that time is now. So Bob put this letter together and a draft, this covenant release. We have shared with town council. Town council didn't have any problem with the form of it. We are working with the finance director right now to set up a mechanism to make sure that we have a way to escrow the funds, and they're received by the town at the closing, because I do not, I get nervous about things like that and have a closing go by where we didn't get cashed out for $200,000. So town council has looked at it, the, the director of finance is looking at it, and hopefully we'll be in a position on July 13th for the board to vote and say, we, the board, accept this covenant, we'll release the lots for sale with that money due at closing. And so that's where we're at right now in that mechanism. I put together a schedule for, for Bob. I've talked to a couple people, both realtors and private individuals who've looked at the lots over the past couple of months, who all had questions about it. The one big question folks have when they see this two-year thing, they've asked, well, do I have to build a house within two years? And they do not. Provided that the lots are released within that two-year period, it then becomes, like any other lot in a subdivision, they can build on it within the requirements of the subdivision approval as a lot in the development. So after transaction's made, funds go to the town, it's a lot in play that people can build on at their leisure. Likely when the price of timber goes down and the heat is off the, the building, uh, community.
So this is like Christmas for affordable housing.
Uh, well, it's, it certainly, it certainly helps.
Yes.
And things don't always work out this way. We're very fortuitous that we're in the situation that we're in. For a lot of people, it's not a very fortuitous situation, but in the case of these longstanding bonus lots, their time may come where they're able to be sold, and those monies will go to the town. Now, the planning board does decide who the beneficiary of those funds are. And at our meeting, when we have that, we'll sort of have that sketched out. I think the, the odds-on favorite might be the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, but that is the planning board's role in designating who's recipient of those funds. Like I said, Bob Ament is here, and he can clarify any of the things that I might have misquoted.
Anything you'd like to say?
I think Tom did a fine job. I just want to say that now that we have the opportunity at hand, it seems to actually turn this lemon into lemonade, really. Looks like we're actually gonna be able to do it, get $400,000 for affordable housing, not a bad result. But it wasn't possible until this market just rose, raised the value of, of properties. But what we do need is a certainty as to, as to how to get it released. And what I've asked, I suggested is that there be a release of covenant. I drafted, drafted it. I'm glad to hear that Frank is looking at it. And I basically want, hope that on July 13th, the planning board will, will vote to authorize the town planner to execute the release upon receipt of the $200,000. The release won't be recorded, won't be issued, won't be given to us to record until the $200,000 comes. But this is a little bit unusual, and prospective buyers are asking questions about, well, when are these lots buildable? How, how, how am I able to, how will I know I can get a building permit? And I think we've worked out a mechanism where we're not asking for you to give us the release, we just want the vote. It's a very simple one in this case. It isn't a matter of construction or anything else, because the construction, you know, is all done because the, the normal covenant was released. But it's very simple. When you get, when you give us $200,000, you're good to go, and we'll give you the document that says so. And if there's been a vote of the planning board like that, and the document's ready to be released to us, I think buyers will be, be satisfied and we can get this done pretty quickly. Right now, there seems to be some confusion. The, Mr. Shamsi, the owner, said that he had won, received an offer, and somebody went and talked to somebody in the town hall and said, no, this isn't so simple, and, you know, there aren't, gotta figure out how to do this, and there wasn't clarity, and the result was that the person walked. And we don't want to have that happen. We want to get these lots sold and get the $200,000 per lot. So it's really very simple. Just want the planning board to confirm. Get $200,000, you're good to go, and this lot becomes like every other lot. Thanks.
We certainly want to expedite that, so could we have that on the agenda for the 13th?
Uh, yes, ma'am, it is on the agenda for the 13th, and we will be, I'll be leaning on Jennifer Moll and Frank both to make sure we're, all are ducks in a row for the 13th.
Great, okay. Cindy, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, $400,000, very nice. Committee reports. Paul, do you want to make a report?
Yeah, last night, the Board of Selectmen received a presentation of the Coastal Resiliency Action Committee. It was a PowerPoint presentation. I think they were a little shocked with the recommendations. The chairman pointed out that the select board have to do something. And one of the recommendations was to hire a individual responsible coastal resiliency in town who'll be handling all these things with all the different departments. Another recommendation was to update the coastal, the local comprehensive plan to include resiliency, and a number of other things like that. I think that the board was somewhat surprised, and they basically said, well, we'll wait to the final report, which is due the end of this week. So the final report will be coming out. Another recommendation was, you may want to consider a, not a coastal resiliency action committee, but a coastal resiliency advisory committee to continue with this effort. And some of the other areas have been noted, like Surf Drive. So I think it was well-received, it was a long presentation. I think I sent out the PowerPoint to the other, or I asked Tom to send it out to everyone.
It came out.
Yeah.
Yeah, did you all have a chance to watch last night?
I did not.
Then maybe you'll want to watch the PowerPoint. Charlotte, the whole committee did a wonderful job. It was a really informative report, and there are different things that need to be done. And I assume in the report, it will outline the kind of changes in, in bylaws that we need.
Yeah, well, they're leaning on the planning board doing a number of different things, and that'll be coming up, and I think we need to address those issues sooner rather than later.
Right. Are you sticking with this, Paul, if there were to be an advisory group?
I, I don't know. Our committee expires probably the end of the week, so I don't know what the select board's gonna do. They may have an additional committee, they may assign different people to it. I don't know. But our charge will be finished hopefully by the end of the week. The other part was, there was also a presentation of Transportation Management Committee among that committee as well, and that was about the steamship authority, and that caused a lot of information. There's a lot of people concerned with that. One recommendation was, we had recommended that the steamship authority take advantage, some of the grants are available, to look at evaluating the 21st century freight operations, and nothing had been done. So the board agreed they would support that in the letter, and a number of other things coming up too. But that's a big issue, and what caused some of it recently was about two weeks ago, a bus was stopped for picking up school kids, and a truck came around the bend going down Woods Hole Road and didn't stop. And they asked the driver why. He said, well, I was too heavy and I was going too fast. I couldn't stop. So they looked at it and they said, well, the bus stop's in the wrong place. That's part of the problem, but the trucks and the speed-
Maybe the speed's too fast.
Frequency is a little different.
Maybe the truck's too heavy for the road. I was impressed by the, the increase in traffic. I can't remember the numbers, but there was something like 30,000 to 170,000. It was dramatic.
Wasn't double, yeah. The other thing too is that it was New Bedford. The city of New Bedford is on the committee, they don't attend any meetings, and there've been some preliminary discussions with, with them, what they're interested in doing. They should be a part of it, whether the, another peer is in New Bedford, somewhere in the south coast. For example, Brayden Point, is it Brayden Point where they took down that power plant? That's a possibility too. But I think there is some interest on leaning on people on the south coast, because they say it takes too long for the ferries to get over, but it takes a while to go over the bridges and come down through the town and wait for a ferry. So there's a number of different options being considered. Which is starting?
It'll be a long time. Any other committee reports? Pam?
So, Tom, did you get a chance to send the report from Ed?
Yes, ma'am. That was the working group, Affordable Housing Working Group report.
Yes.
It did get sent out likely, when we were talking, yesterday?
Yeah.
So likely yesterday. It's also in our correspondence folder as well.
So the-
I don't think I have the correspondence folder.
It's that purple one?
That's what it is. So over the past several months, the Affordable Housing Working Group has been working diligently to come up with funding mechanisms for land for a wide variety of options to move ahead with affordable housing. And Angie was the chair, now she can't be the chair. And the members of the committee, I have to say, worked their tails off. And Michael also had some terrific ideas, and Wayne Lingefelter, who is not on the committee, but a member of the, the community, who also has a tremendous background in housing. All this to say that when I talked to Tom about when we could present, and I think Tom said the 13th of July.
I, I said, I think the 13th of July, but when we put things on the agenda, we make sure it's okay with the chair, so.
So it's all on you, Charlotte. We just piled the stuff on the 13th, and would like to hear it.
Yeah, we don't, what we're concerned about is, everything gets pushed out, it's pushed out, and we want to be able to access some of the funding through the state. And we also want to look at the parcels of property in town, because when you look at what other communities have done, the towns have donated tracts of land to put up affordable housing, and that's not something the town of Falmouth has been very anxious to do. But there are spots all over town-
Spring Bar's Road, wait a minute, I disagree with that statement.
Wait a minute, let me just finish, and you may disagree with anything I say.
But the town gave a huge amount of land to affordable housing.
And how lo, how many years ago was that? Many. It predated-
Well, just, you said that they, we didn't, it doesn't, it was while I was on the board, so it's-
Okay, but, so I've been here for six years in September, and there has not been any donation of any large parcels of land for development for affordable housing. And when I, if, if you look at what other Cape communities are doing, it's astounding. What they're doing, how they're doing it, how they're having, how they're getting their funding. So this group did so much research and came up with so many terrific ideas, and I'm very anxious to have Ed or Angie or whomever, or me, or John.
Could we, could we do this, Pam? Because I too would like to hear it. It's always worthwhile hearing good ideas, especially about affordable housing. Could we look at the way the agenda is shaping up and see what kind of time? Because if we're going to have a report, typically they come after the regular business. It could come so late that you would have a very sleepy audience. So let's see how the, if it's possible, we'll do it on the 13th. If not, what is our meeting after that? If not, what is our meeting after that?
July 27th. There is not a meeting scheduled currently for July 20th. And given what we've got going on this summer, so on July 13th, we anticipate opening the hearing, we'll be advertising it tomorrow, for the MR Cod bylaw.
Yep. You have to rename that.
I love MR Cod.
It's not going to stick.
People love...
It's a serious project.
Well, M R C O D. So anyhow, the multifamily, affordable housing, mixed-use overlay, that thing. So we've got that scheduled, to open the hearing on that on July 13th. We will likely have a hearing also starting in July for recodification. I just got an email from Bob Mitchell today with the first half of the matrix. The working group will be meeting on that June 30th, so we will hopefully be opening that hearing over the summer. And also over the summer, the Form Based Code, based on the schedule there. So it's conceivable that July 13th, well, it's absolutely July 13th will open the hearing for mixed-use multifamily housing. Likely on the 20th or maybe the 27th for recodification, then shortly after that for Form Based Code, depending on what sort of progress we've gotten, put together on that. So we've got a busy summer. We're likely going to be meeting three times a week as we had before. We've had a number of holidays sort of chalked in that have sort of chopped up our three meetings a month schedule, but July 13th, July 20th, July 27th is what I anticipate for meetings for the planning board in July.
One of those meetings, if this is on the agenda, Paul?
I'd just want to make a comment. You referred several times to Anjay, our newest select person. I believe her name is Angelae, and that's an old Sanskrit name that's very famous, that I forget what it means, but it's a beautiful name.
It is.
And I feel distressed every time people say Anjay. It's like, Rebecca is Becky.
She goes by Anjay, so...
She chose it.
That's her.
But Angelae is a lovely name.
It is a lovely name, but she...
Well, maybe you should get her to change her name.
Yeah, you'd have to work that out with her in person.
I've never met her.
Oh, she's absolutely lovely.
She's a joy to meet. She's really...
Yeah. It's in Sanskrit?
I believe it's an ancient Sanskrit name, and I forget what it means, but it's a beautiful name.
We'll all look it up.
Doesn't need to be close to a German, does it?
Point of order, let's go.
No, let's go. All right. We'll get to it when we can. We're going to have to look at all these. Paul?
You got future agenda items?
We have to look at the correspondence here.
Okay.
Okay, and see what's in it. But maybe we can get through it quickly. We've got, do your members of the board, I think you all had this letter, it's from the Energy Committee.
Yeah.
Members of the Falmouth Energy Committee, have we all seen it?
Yes.
Do you want to discuss it now, or you just, we've looked at it, and I think she, they're working it out...
Yeah.
... on what they can do. Is that accurate?
Yeah, so everything that's in the correspondence folder, and as I said before, you know, I've been a bit remiss in the correspondence folder. So everything you get, when we get correspondence, and we typically forward to the board, and so the correspondence folder is sort of a collector of those things that you've seen. So everything that's in that folder, you've seen an email about, so the...
Okay, so you've seen all this stuff.
But I think it's perfectly appropriate to say what's in the folder, so the folks at home who are still...
Yeah.
We don't have to go over it again. We've all had the opportunity to read it.
And I think this is what Pam was referring to.
The public can come in and request that.
Pleasure of the board.
Yeah. Funding Enhancement Plan for the Falmouth Community Housing, very worth reading. Falmouth Climate Action Network, which we just talked about, and the report of the Coastal Resiliency Action Committee, which you've been sent a link to so that you can see it digitally there. Are there any announcements? The answer is yes, there's one. This announcement is about an event that's going to be held at a local gallery to benefit Knobscallite.
Benefit, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Oh, to benefit Knobscall, the Friends of Knobscallite, the group that is restoring Knobscallite and turning it into a maritime museum. The Main Street Gallery, which is right next to Eight Cousins, is holding a one-week open exhibit time that you can do a silent auction and then a live auction of paintings of Knobscallite at terrific prices, but really good paintings, on August 14th and 15th. So that's one announcement. Are there other announcements? So if you have a painting of Knobscallite that you've made and want to put it in, good. It's on their website.
Maybe I'll do one.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Oh, future agenda item.
Future agenda item.
Future agenda item. God, there are a list of them. Okay, so future agenda items, we already have, we have to, wait, I need a different piece of paper. We've got the Shamsi decision to make on where the money is.
July 13th.
July 13th. We're going to, we had continued the hearing on the McSweeney property to go to July 13th.
I think we've already identified all these. I think this point is usually for something we haven't already spoke of.
Yes.
That's usually what it is, isn't it, Pat? Isn't that what we do?
What people would like to see brought up.
We've already identified all these issues, so they're already on the agenda. This is your first time doing this. This is in case somebody else, something we haven't talked to about already.
Because usually by this point in meeting, I've tuned out.
You're already out of here. We don't have to rehash all this.
Thank you.
It's anything new.
Would anyone want to add to our agenda, Paul?
Yeah, not for the 13th.
Oh.
But this issue about the engineering referrals and deferring everything to the planning board, I think is an issue we need to discuss, not the 13th, but sometime maybe later this month or even next month. But I've never seen that done before, and I think we need to figure out how we deal with that, because deferring back to us to make these decisions doesn't seem to make a lot of sense.
We should get some input on why they did it that way. That was really odd.
I think we need to talk about it.
Yeah. There's something just under the water there.
I make a motion we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Hi.[1782.25]